Well, good evening, everyone, and we do want to welcome you to tonight's meeting. We are in somewhat of a delay as we are waiting for one more commissioner to formulate a quorum for tonight's meeting. I am aware that there is one commissioner on their way, and as soon as they arrive, we will begin our public meeting this evening. So, thank you for your patience. Well, thank you. So, at this time, it is, we will at least begin our meeting this evening with an invocation. So, I ask that you would just bow your heads and join me in the invocation, and then afterwards, would you please just stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Heavenly Father, we just come this day thanking you for this day that you have created. We ask that as we proceed through this meeting, Lord God, that we will just continue to hear from you and to operate in wisdom and integrity, to also listen to our citizens so that, again, the best decisions are made for the good of this county. We just thank you again for this day, and just thank you for peace in our country, and just ask again that you would just bless America. And in Jesus' name, in all that agree, please say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now hereby call this meeting to order. And at this time, are there any revisions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda was approved by four. We're now moving to our public hearing. The first public hearing we'll have this evening is regarding our Community Development Block Grant for Program FY 2018, the Annual Action Plan, and we'll invite Ms. Annual up for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we have developed a draft annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program for physical year 2018. For your consideration, this plan has been publicized and completed and is prepared for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. HUD informed Henry County that it was, it could anticipate funding of just under 1.2 million. With that, we have recommended activities to carry out within the community to benefit low-to-moderate income persons eligible for CDBG funding. We are recommending activities as listed under Public Facility Infrastructure Improvements as well as Public Service and our program administration calls for the cost of staff time in the carrying out of activities as well as for the mandate of, excuse me, to affirmatively further fair housing. We are also with this recommendation recommending a change from the physical year 2017 Annual Action Plan, that is to delete one activity, or excuse me, two activities. They are Synergy Real Estate and Shiloh McDonough Community Outreach. These activities were unable to be carried out in 2017. We are at this time recommending one additional activity to take up the majority of those funds, and that's the National Community Resource and Development. That is rehab, as we are deleting one rehab activity, we are recommending to add another.
All right, well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, okay, this is a public hearing, so we will allow any citizens to come forth, and you will be granted a total of three minutes each to speak and share your comments regarding this presentation. So, at this time, we'll invite anyone up to speak for three minutes. Calling again, will there be anyone else wishing to speak regarding the presentation that you've just heard? Well, thank you. This concludes our public hearing, and again, we'll just look to the board to identify, are there any questions or comments regarding the proposal? Okay, well, thank you. And so, at this time, we'll call for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Four in favor, two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to our next public hearing regarding our 2018-2019 millage rate. The purpose of this hearing is that by law, if the governing body is contemplating an increase in property taxes, three public hearings are to be held to allow public input. We had the first meeting this morning at nine o'clock a.m., and this evening's meeting is meeting number two, and then meeting three will be held on Tuesday, July 31st, at nine o'clock a.m., which is also the time that the millage rate will be finalized. Well, this now constitutes a public hearing, and I now call our county manager, Sherri Hopson Matthews, and staff forward to give our presentation, and then afterwards, citizens will be allowed up to three minutes each for public comment. We now yield the floor to our county manager.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. As Sherwood has indicated, this is the second of three required public hearings for the setting of our millage rate. Before I begin my presentation, I will have our Tax Commissioner, David Curry, go over one slide within the presentation because we are often asked, where does our dollar go, and how is that dollar being spent? So, I'll allow David to present to the board, and then I'll begin my presentation.
Good afternoon, Board. Often in the office, we've got a poster up that a lot of the citizens look at often, and they, they ask questions, and this, we used to have a pie chart, and a gentleman that worked in the IT department back several years ago in Henry County came up with this. He said, you know, it would be better if you displayed a $1 bill so somebody can see exactly how much of that dollar goes somewhere else. I thought it was a great idea. We adopted it in the office, and it's been a hit ever since. As you can see, the county tax, the county school tax is roughly 50 cents of every dollar we collect. So, every $1 we collect in property taxes, the school system gets 50 cent. That's for their M and O. But you also look down to the third line item, and it's county school bond. The Henry County School System has a school bond that has to be paid off. They also get eight cents of every dollar. So, in total, the school system gets 58 cent of every dollar we collect in property taxes. The county, of course, gets 37 cents of every dollar, and the two-mill water bond equates to about a nickel of every dollar we collect. We wanted to show this slide. I knew that the citizens would be here. I know we're on the, on the web as well, but when, when citizens ask where their money is spent, and I realize this is a 20,000-foot level, you know, your 37 cents gets divided out between public safety and other things, but their property tax bill doesn't go to the county, not 100% of it. As a matter of fact, a very small portion of that tax bill actually comes back to the Henry County government to run the services. So, we wanted to display this, and if you've got any questions, and I'll hang around. If any of the citizens have a question about this chart later, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barm?
Yes, David, I love this, but I do have a question on billing, and, and I was just wondering, and I was thinking about this today and the other day. We have so many senior citizens in Henry County, and I know if you, you've got a loan on a house, you're paying your taxes through your escrow, and I was just wondering, have y'all ever considered, or has anybody in state offers a payment plan for seniors or somebody that may want to pay their taxes in advance, like the year before, like starting January, pay of payment, and February all the way up, to try to, try to help some of these seniors?
Well, that's, that's a great question, Commissioner. The short answer is no, we do not, and I'll tell you why we do not. When the tax reform came out, when President Trump introduced his tax reform last year, we got a lot of phone calls. People wanted to hurry up and pay their property taxes to get that deduction off their income tax. The bottom line is, we don't have a line item. We don't have anything due. The digest, and that's why we're here today, we work through the whole year. The tax assessors get the information beginning, they hand the digest over to us, we continue to crunch numbers, we set a millage rate. At that point, once the Department of Revenue says, Henry County, you can send out tax bills, that is when the, the line item becomes, that's when it starts to exist in the computer system. So, if somebody were to give me next year's property tax today, I have nowhere to put it. It's against the law for me to hold those funds because I don't have anything due. So, this whole process, and it really takes a year for the, for the assessors do their part, Tax Commissioner do their part, the Finance Department, the county manager, her presentation, the three hearings we, we go through, once we go to Department of Revenue and they give me that letter, it's okay to send out tax bills, that's when I can collect money. So, that's the part about paying early. Let's go back to payment plan. I've, I've told this story several times in the past. If somebody can't pay their property tax bill, we're going to do a payment plan. The worst part about my job, absolute worst, is the first Tuesday every month, after we have exhausted every single avenue we have, and we sent letters, made phone calls, paid, made visits, and someone just refuses to pay property taxes, we're forced to take their property to the courthouse steps. I'm, I'm glad to say that hardly ever happens because we do set up payment plans. We do set them up on some type of arrangement, and that's the case that happened with a lady in a mobile home several years ago. When she came in, she didn't have enough money to pay a mobile home tax bill. We found out later that she didn't have enough money to make it through the month. So, we put her in touch with Connecting Henry. We put her in touch with senior service and got her food, got her shelter, got her some other things, some medical attention. Once that was taken care of, then we addressed the property tax issue. For me, property taxes is something I'm legally bound to collect, but my first priority is making sure the citizens are taken care of, and that's what we do. So, if somebody were to come in and say, I lost my job, and that's a real thing. It happened in 2006 all the way to 2012. We were in that heavy recession. There was a lot of people in the real estate industry did not have the money to pay. We worked very hard to set people on payment plans to get the bills paid. Once we get them paid, get them, get them back to where they're not delinquent, then, you know, then they can get back on their feet and move forward. But we don't need the law or legislators to tell us we can set up a payment plan. We do that already. I just can't take that payment prior to a bill being due.
Good question. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner.
I think the Tax Commissioner's comments was certainly a good segue into my presentation as we talk about the revenues that are allocated within each department. As you all know, we're setting the millage rate tonight because as part of setting the millage rate, this helps us to fund the budget that's already been approved by this board. If you all will recall, when we approved the FY 19 budget, in the presentation to the board, we discussed that we were looking at keeping the millage rate at the current 12.733 so that we could continue to provide the level of service that's expected of us to provide, but also so that we could provide those revenues or expenditures to those departments so that they can continue to function accordingly. So, if you all will just bear with me, again, for those that may be new tonight, during the public hearing, this is the same presentation that was presented this morning at nine a.m., and then, again, we will present it again on July 31st. It is also my understanding that the presentation has been uploaded to the county website, so it is available there as well. Our sources of revenue come from various sources. I will not read the entire slide to you all, but just wanted you all to be aware that when we adopted the budget in May, we did adopt the budget with a projection of 161 million, or I'm sorry, 151,808 for our expected projected revenues. At that time, again, and I think Mr. Curry has explained it, it does take some time for us to finalize what that number will be. And when I say us, I mean a plethora of departments, our Tax Assessor's Office, our Tax Commissioner's Office, our Budget Financial Team, and then finally, a final number to the County Manager's Office. So, at the time that we were preparing the budget, at that time, our total expected revenues were going to be about 151 million, with us utilizing about $9.7 million of fund balance. Again, if you all will recall during our presentation, we have spent a lot of time talking to the board about getting away from utilizing fund balance. And so, as I go through the rest of the presentation, you'll see some more conversation about that. We do have appropriations based on various departments within our organization. We have our Legislative and Executive, our Judicial, our Public Safety, Public Works, Health and Welfare, Culture and Recreation, and Housing and Development. And again, this just shows a breakdown of what we are appropriating funding for. If you'll notice, again, in our adopted budget for 1819, we have proposed 161,535 appropriation, but I do want you all to pay special attention to line item number two, which is the non-departmental. If you'll notice, the FY 16 and 17 budget, which was adopted, showed about a $7.5 million impact or appropriation on our budget, and then in 17 and 18, another 7.584. And then for FY 1819, that number actually dropped to 1.9 million dollars. That number reflects a group of things, our health insurance that the board did elect to take on for the employees at 75%, but it also includes the public safety certifications at a cost of about $500,000, and then, again, the employee health clinic in which the board did approve for us to begin on this year, and then also the contingency. So, you will see that that number has actually been reduced. Over the course of the two previous budgets, that number included our pension amounts that we are due to pay, and then across the board raises that we've given on two previous years but did not give during this budget cycle due to us working through our class and compensation study. So, the millage rate that we are recommending and proposing to the board for consideration is 12.733. This is the same rate from the previous year. Our staff feels confident that we will be able to continue to operate with this 12.733 millage rate and also keep us in line with the budget that we approved back in May. For the, for the board and for those that are viewing here tonight, you will notice that with the millage rate, we are expecting to, or we will generate 87,862,344 in tax collections, and that is an increase of about 6.3 million dollars over the FY 19 adopted revenues. Again, the revenues that we were projecting at the time that the budget was adopted was 81.5 million dollars. Some of the things that we want to look at or that we will be considering as part of this increase, and this was discussed during the budget meetings, is that we do have a class and compensation study that was approved by this board, and we are almost there in terms of bringing it to the finish line in a recommendation to the board. We're comfortable that we will be able to present that to the board in the next month, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to keep it at about 4 billion dollars. We also have some pending tax litigation and appeals that we will be needing to address. So, rather than having to come back to the board after the fact and ask for this additional funding, we did go ahead and put a line item in there for that amount. I do want the board to still understand that we are utilizing the 9.7 million dollars of fund balance because even if I were to take the 6.3 million dollars and reduce the amount on our fund balance, it would still be the same because if the board does elect to fund our class and compensation study, that 4 million dollars has to come from somewhere. I do want you all to know that the board did adopt a resolution in which we do have to cap our fund balance at 25%, and this millage rate increase, increase will have no impact on us going below that restriction. So, we will still have our 25% allocation or 25% restriction within our fund balance. Are there any questions pertaining to this slide at all?
No, I had just a thought on a previous slide, the one where we spoke about the revenues that we receive, and we, of course, noted that we have about 50.47% of it coming from property taxes. In the next presentation, if maybe on the 31st, if we can identify the breakdown of that between commercial, residential, and industrial, I think that would be some good information to also outline.
We'll have that prepared for the meeting on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments so far? Okay, Commissioner Clement?
Yes, Sher, I think that where you have the 12.733 for the 2018, it would be helpful if next to that, for the next time, if we can have what it is presently so that citizens can see the difference in this 12.733.
Absolutely. I would certainly modify this slide to add that as well. Any additional?
Other questions or comments?
Questions, recommendations? If not? We often are questioned about the 12.733 and what that looks like when we talk about millage. I mentioned to the board this morning that currently a mill is valued at about 7.1 million dollars. And so, when we start talking about where that 12.733 goes and how our services are distributed amongst the county government, it's interesting for us to discuss where, where those funds actually go. If you look at public safety, it represents about 54% of our total budget, and in quantifying that, the millage rate would look at about, or would look like a 6.840 millage rate. Our Legislative and Executive is at 13.06%, and then we have our judicial system at 10.91%. I won't read the rest of the, the various services, but we'll give you all an opportunity to review that as well. Sherwood?
I have a question. I thought this one is probably more for our Tax Commissioner. Earlier today, we heard a public comment about public safety and, you know, of course, potentially wanting, potentially wanting to pay more for public safety because of the changes we're going through. The question is, how, what would it take to have a dedicated public safety millage rate?
We can break that out. What needs to take place is tax districts. We need to be able to say, we've got a, and we talked to Department of Revenue about this, and the message sent back, Henry County is one of the few counties left that does not break out certain districts like that. But we didn't, did get with a Department of Revenue. It's my understanding, a resolution would have to get passed to board of commissioners, and then we could designate how many mills go toward public safety. That way, when the citizen sees their tax bill, if the total millage rate is 12.733, they can see that just roughly eight or nine mills would go toward public safety. But that's Department of Revenue question, and I believe, it's been about a year and a half since I had that discussion with them, but I want to say they said that the county would need an ordinance first. From there, we could pass on the tax districts.
So, just to be clear, we would need to pass a resolution?
Yes.
Pretty much, okay?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Sherwood and Board. I do want to echo the comments made by our Tax Commissioner, and that is something that we are currently discussing on another level in terms of our service delivery strategy. If you all will recall, over the course of at least the last 15 or 20 years, our SDS has been created through memorandums of understanding or agreements between the county and the four cities. What we are looking to do is to, to do what most other counties and cities are doing in the state of Georgia and create special service districts, which is similar to what David was referring to in special tax districts. And what that will do is it gives us a better picture of what service is being provided by the county and what services are being provided by the city and what that cost would look like. And so, we are working towards that, and this is one of those areas in which we will hopefully have a more definitive answer in terms of what that cost will be. We are still at the manager attorney level, but we will be getting our Tax Commissioner involved in that conversation in the very, very near future. So, just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you. Thank you both.
So, it's always interesting to look at what impact the millage rate will have on a home valued at about $150,000 and then a home valued at 250,000. I do want you all to keep in mind that this only represents the county portion only. If you will recall in the earlier presentation, there are other agencies that we do collect millage rates for as well, the Board of Education and the Water Authority. So, please don't leave here thinking that this is the, the cost overall. This is county portion only. So, again, if you have two homes, both one valued at 150,000, another valued at 250,000, you go through your appraisal or assessed value of the 40%, which takes it to 60,000 and 100,000 dollars respectively. Then you have your typical homestead exemptions of about 15,000 dollars, which takes you to your taxable value. In keeping with the 12.733 millage rate that we are recommending for a home valued at 100, or valued at the 45,000 dollars but home value of 150,000, your county taxes would be about 573,000 dollars for the 150,000 dollar home, and then 1,082 dollars for the 250,000 dollar home. And again, the next slide repeats the same information, but again, it does show a breakdown of the county, the school M and O, the school bond, the water, and then what your total bill would be. Again, for the 150,000 dollar home, you'll see, again, that the county represents about 28.6% of that millage rate, resulting in the 573. School M and O is at about 56% at 1,012. School bond, an additional 217 dollars, and then the water, two mills, would be about 4.5% of your tax bill, resulting in the 90 dollars. Again, same thing for the 250,000 dollar home, same information. Are there any questions pertaining to this slide? If not, at this time, I will turn it back over to the Chair and the Board and allow you all to open it up for public comment.
Okay, hearing none. Are there any other questions or comments before we begin the public hearing? Commissioner Clement?
And I just want to reiterate that the 12.733, I don't know what, I guess it was the same information that we send out every year that citizens think that we're here to raise their taxes. It would have been easier had all the citizens knew that what we're proposing is not any different than what they had last year and that we're actually leaving everything the same. And I think a lot of times the citizens get the message from the newspaper that the meeting is about raising taxes, when if we have that, it was 12.733 last year, and the board is proposing to keep it the same, then we wouldn't have to worry about people calling and saying, well, y'all having a meeting to raise taxes because that's not what's happening.
Right, and it's.
So, we're, so this year, we're basically not raising taxes and we're leaving, the proposal is to not raise taxes and leave it the same.
We are doing an increase because we did not do 100% rollback, and so, while we will have the same millage rate as last year, the way the law is written, if we don't do 100% rollback, then we are considered, or it is classified as an increase in your property taxes. So, it's, I hate to say it's a miss, a little misleading, but that is how the law is written. And I hope I haven't messed that up, David. Maybe I have, and I'll let him clarify. But I, I agree. I wish we didn't have to advertise it that way.
Even doing 100% rollback, the county and school system can tax on the growth of a digest.
Right.
There's two portions, there's growth and reassessment. If a community or a county witnesses or has, experiences new homes, new buildings going up. witnesses or has experiences new homes, new buildings going up, that's growth in your digest and you can capture that. Where the language, it's a little confusing, is if you had a home last year that was valued at 150,000 and this year it's for 160,000, you're going to see more money to the county and school coffers. So that's where the increase is coming. But you're correct, 12.733 is what the millage rate was last year. That's what the county's proposing for this year. So there's not an increase in the millage rate, but for that individual that lives in a home that saw an increase in their value, they will see an increase.
And just from a commissioner's standpoint, I've been having to answer this question to my district that we're not changing the millage rate to get more money. Basically, the reason that they're paying more is because the values are coming back.
That's correct. And keep something else in mind. The very first chart I showed, the county gets a third, basically a third of the dollar we collect. So if the county were to suggest going all the way back, a roll, 100% rollback, the school system, and this is not throwing the school system on the bus, it's just, it's just facts. The school system is keeping their 20 mills. They're keeping their bond rate at 3.628 or something like that. Individuals are going to see a increase in their tax bill if their value went up, whether you do a 100% rollback or not.
They're still not seeing it.
So, and I'm not trying to defend anybody or I'm just trying to make it clear, the school system did not roll back a millage rate. So they're going to see an increase on two-thirds of the tax bill already. The county is keeping a 12.733 millage rate and there will be a small increase for the county portion, but nothing compared to the other two-thirds of their tax bill that goes to the school system.
Thank you.
Clear?
That's clear. All right, I've got a, okay, we'll go Commissioner Wilson. It will come to Commissioner Barm.
Could you tell us what the total millage rate is on the tax bill? 38 something, is it?
Well, it depends on what district you live in. There's five districts. You've got unincorporated and you've got your four cities. I don't have that chart with me. Do you have it? Well, there you go. The unincorporated for county is 38.361 mills. Same as Stockbridge. Hampton is a little bit higher. McDonald has the highest at 40 mills, a little over So people living in the unincorporated part of the county as well as Stockbridge has the lowest millage rate anywhere else in the county. Hampton, Lucas Grove have the same and again, McDonald has the highest.
Okay. Other question? Okay, Commissioner Barm. Thank you for that chart.
Yes, David. Can you talk to us about homestead exemption a little bit? Now, I was as hired in most counties and can you explain how that came to be?
Well, it came to be because the legislators, it started here at the county and legislators passed or got on the ballot, the citizens passed the extra homestead exemptions. And this is something that a lot of people don't realize. They, they, they raise their family in Henry County. They put their kids in the school system here. All of a sudden, they get retirement age and they think, well, I'm moving to the country. I'm moving to the country where things are slower and taxes are cheaper and things like that. Truth is, they're moving to the country where their taxes are higher because Henry County has a special school exemption to go back to the dollar bill. School system gets two-thirds of every dollar. At age 62, we get an increase in the taxes, in the exemption, the taxes paid on property tax. At 65, that exemption goes higher. It starts out at 20,000 age 62. At 65, it goes to 80,000. At 68, it goes to 120,000 exemption. And at 70, it's 100%, school exempt from taxes. If a home is valued, fair market value at $200,000 and you're age 65, we tax them 40%. 40% of 200,000 is $80,000. So for that couple that retired at 65 years old, they're not paying any school taxes. Their property tax bill just got cut by two-thirds. I had a conversation with some gentlemen. They were, they met at a little restaurant down the road here. They were getting ready to play golf and they were, one of the guys had moved to county just south of here and he was complaining about his taxes. The other three knew why his taxes went up. They still lived in Henry County. And that's what he said. He said, I moved down there to get away from the high taxes. He said, I'm paying more down there than I am in Henry County and I don't have the services. So to go to your homestead exemptions, we have a lot of homestead exemptions in Henry County. We are very, very good to our seniors in Henry County. We've got a lot of disabled veteran exemptions. Those are, the disabled veteran exemptions are pretty consistent across each county. I would say where we outpace other counties in exemptions is the school exemption.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, very good. Very good questions. Thank you as well. Okay, hearing that there are no more questions from the board, this now, we'll move now into our public hearing. And so at this time, we'll just allow any citizen or invite any citizen who's wishing to speak on this matter. You will be granted three minutes each. And again, as you come, would please state your name and address for the So any citizen wishing to speak, now is the time to do so.
Good afternoon. How everybody doing?
Good evening.
My name is Mickey Ridley. I live in Hampton. I just bought a home. I moved down here in April and it's $250,000 and I just wanted to know.
Can you speak up?
Just a little bit, sir, I'm sorry. It's a $250,000 house and I just wanted to know, I know I'm paying a lot for school taxes, but how much more am I going to pay this year? That's my question.
Okay, so if we could, are we going to continue the public hearing and then we'll allow either the Tax Commissioner to come back and to address that question, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak that we have? One question that we'll, we'll come back to after the public hearing. Calling again, anyone wishing to speak? Okay, well, hearing none, we'll conclude our public hearing and invite our Tax Commissioner to come up. And I'm not sure if you want to address that generally or just meet with him after the meeting.
Well, I'd like to meet with him afterwards. I don't know if he's got homestead exemption or whatever, but I can run you an estimate. I can run you an estimate on your tax bill and we'll see what kind of exemptions he signed up for, what he qualifies for. We can run that estimate for this year. If he hasn't signed up for homestead exemption, we get him signed up and see what the results will be for the year following.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the board? County Manager, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I don't have any other comments or questions. I did take some notes in terms of some additional information that I'll have ready for the meeting on Monday. And certainly if there's anything or any questions that you all have between now and Monday, if you'd just let me know and we'll make sure that we have that prepared for the meeting.
And just as a side note, the meeting is on Tuesday, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Tuesday at 9 o'clock is the third and final meeting.
Yes, I'm so sorry. First day of school is Monday, meeting is Tuesday, July 31st. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, well, we thank everyone who came out this evening to hear the meeting. But this finalizes our public hearing this evening and there is no further action to be taken by the board at this time. So but to, please do be reminded that the next meeting, which is our final public hearing, is going to be held on Tuesday, July 31st at 9:00 a.m. and this is also at the time the millage rate will be adopted. So at this time, we will call for a motion to adjourn.
Abode.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Four in favor, two absent. Thank you.